Hey, it sounds like we're going. Excuse me. All right. So, good evening, everybody. This is the June 12th meeting of the City of Kalamazoo Zoning Board of Appeals, a volunteer advisory board appointed by the City Commission. Is staff ready to conduct the roll call?
Yes.
Go for it.
Sylvester?
Here.
Work?
Here.
Homer?
Here.
Harrington?
Here.
Han?
Here.
Excellent. All right, so for each public hearing tonight, public comments will be accepted during the times indicated on tonight's meeting agenda. Community members may call 888-382-9556 during the public comment period where they will enter a queue and will be prompted to offer their comments in turn. Callers will be commenting live. They are not able to leave a recorded message. Are there any announcements or changes to the original agenda?
There are no announcements or changes to note at this time.
Let me look at the agenda. Where are we doing the bylaws? I assume that's under the discussion and action items.
That is...
It didn't print on the one I printed for myself, so maybe I just printed it.
Yes, it's under the discussion and action items.
Okay. We're gonna talk about bylaws if anybody's desperate to sit around, stick around and hear about that. Nevertheless, all right, first is acceptance of last month's minutes. Do we have any changes to the minutes? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
A move to approve.
A second, anybody?
A second.
Excellent. Do we need to discuss any of it? No. All right, all those in favor of approving the minutes, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. That carries unanimously. All right, so here is the procedure for tonight's public hearings. For each request, the secretary will read the application into the public record. The applicant or the representative will then have 10 minutes to provide their comments. I always say to the applicants, 10 minutes is not a lot of time, so if you can sort of get to the meat of it, you'll be better served than 10 minutes of introductions. To the applicants or representative, make sure you sign in and provide your name and address at the podium. Following that, the public is invited to comment at the podium. Again, you will sign in, clearly state your name and address, and present your comments within a three-minute limit. Again, keep it brief, get to the point. Those in favor are invited to speak first, those opposed second, and then we'll do the call-in portion. After this, we will close the public hearing and the board will then conduct what is called a finding of fact. This is where the board states what they feel are the facts of the request. The board must approve the finding of fact of the board. So therefore, the first vote you hear is not a ruling on the request, but on accepting the finding of fact. After this, the board discusses that request, the request in order to determine a ruling on it. During this period, the board reserves the right to ask questions of persons who have already spoken, even after the public comment portion is closed. I'll say if you're asked to come to answer some questions during this period, please come to the microphone so it can be caught on the recording. All right, so once the discussion has ended, the board will move on to a roll call vote of approving, denying the specific request. Please be aware that a full board consists of six members. Obviously, there's only five tonight, which you still need four votes to carry the variance or non-use, or the non-use or use variance. All right, I think I covered that. Does the secretary wish to read the first application for the record?
Absolutely. Righty.
Which one is first?
Oh, this little guy. I think Reed Avenue. Okay. An application for a variance for provisions of the, excuse me, of the zoning ordinance has been filed with the Zoning Department of Appeals by the City of Kalamazoo Public Services Department. The applicant, or ZBA number 25-05, excuse me, -05, F. 433 Reed Avenue. The applicant is requesting a variance from the Natural Features Protection Ordinance, Chapters 50-6.2, subsection C and D, to authorize relief from the wetlands and water resource standards to allow the installation of a new stormwater, excuse me, BMPs, the best management practices within the required setbacks of the wetlands on the site in Portage Creek. Please note that this request will not change the zoning classification of the properties.
Thank you. Whoever is representing this request, you can come up, tell us who you are, sign in, all that good stuff. Is the microphone working over there, Shelby?
Sign in here.
There we go.
If I try talking while I'm writing, I'm gonna...
Nope, that's fine.
Start tripping over my words.
We don't have the timer on facing us, is why I think me and Pete are asking. It's fine.
All right, I got you. All right. My name is Tom Palumbo. I am one of the civil engineers on staff with the Department of Public Services. Thanks, Shelby. Within the Public Works Division. And, yeah, I'm here on behalf of the Portage Creek trustees, who are largely the drivers of this project, to request a variance under the NFP ordinance, as was discussed. This project came to NFP back in April, I think it was April 22nd, and the board unanimously approved, or recommended approving this variance. So, just to give you a little bit of background on the property, it's 433 Reed Avenue. It is currently owned by the city's Brownfield Authority. Typically, Brownfield Authority properties are intended to go to private owners that will then create a tax base with that property. However, this one sat for a long time, and it is not ideal for developing, to put it mildly. It sits in a floodplain, it's got a lot of wetlands on it, and it's got some amount of environmental contamination. It sits right on the edge of Portage Creek. Portage Creek actually runs through the parcel, and it's an NFP parcel, so that puts a lot more restrictions for development on it as well. So, what has been proposed is that the parcel is used as a stormwater and floodplain remediation area that will provide habitat as well and improve the water quality of Portage Creek. Also proposed with that is transferring the property from the city's Brownfield Authority to the Department of Public Services, also within the city of Kalamazoo, but quite a bit different of a purpose. The site is 4.2 acres, and it is zoned RM15. It sits between Reed Court and Grand Elk Railroad to the east and west, and between Reed Ave. and Stockbridge to the south and north. Portage Creek flows through the parcel from south to north. It has, we call it very flashy, because anytime you have a little bit of rain, the water level of the creek just astronomically goes up. There's actually a USGS gauging station that sits right next to where Reed Ave. crosses the creek, and it's something that I look at a lot as an engineer who works on water resources projects, and I'm always just kind of blown away by how fast the water rises in here, how much our flow rate of water, you know? We measure it in cubic feet per second, like how much is coming down every time it rains, but also with the amount of water that comes, there's also issues that we have with water quality, too. This project is primarily something that addresses that water quality problem. The project is funded by a natural resource damage assessment that comes from the paper mills that were previously immediately upstream from this project, so to the south. I think one that's very well-known is the Allied Paper Site that is now, it's a huge construction area right now with vehicles that are, there's dump trucks always going in and out hauling out contaminated material. And there's also a paper mill site, or a former paper mill site, or multiple ones, actually, I believe, between, in the next block, kind of going to the north, which is downstream on Portage Creek, so between Reed and Alcott, where currently there's a county health department building there. And then there was also some, there were a lot more buildings over there, up to, not real long ago, but anyways, for decades, maybe a century even, the paper mills immediately upstream have been dumping, had been dumping industrial byproducts and chemicals into the creek, and left a, it really left a legacy of environmental contamination for the water, for the sediment, for the whole area around the creek. So, using damages money that comes from that is, this project is part of that use. Our variance is needed because the NFP ordinance requires that infrastructure that treats stormwater cannot be placed in a natural resource area. So, the purpose of that is that if I come in and I build, you know, a big building with a big parking lot, maybe it has a use that involves hazardous substances that we wouldn't want getting into a creek or into our groundwater. The purpose of this NFP, this specific NFP rule about placing a BMP or treatment infrastructure within this area is that if somebody's gonna build something like that, they need to keep the items that treat that stormwater on their own site, and they can't be pushing it out into a natural area, introducing the pollution from their site into that area. This project is a lot different than what we usually see and what I believe that ordinance was written for, in that this project is dealing with existing pollution that's already entering the creek completely untreated, and instead of being a development project, it's a project that's intended to restore the natural conditions. So, the other part that I want to add to that is a feasibility thing where the treatment devices and methods that we're using within the site can't be placed outside, it would have to be placed outside of the parcel to not be in a natural feature area. So, there's a feasibility aspect to it, too, where we're just not able to build this while following this particular NFP ordinance in that section. If you have any further questions, I'd be glad to answer those, but that's kind of a synopsis of the project and why we need this variance.
Thank you. We'll call you back up if we have other questions. Thank you.
Pete, any staff comments? I'll just keep the staff comments brief and not repeat what Tom already mentioned. He covered the NFP board hearing and that approval. I do want to be clear that, so the NFP ordinance does not permit this work, you know, within the protected setbacks for wetlands or water resources. So, in this circumstance, as Tom mentioned, there's already stormwater flowing through this property untreated and working its way to the creek, so that's, you know, this is not like something, it's not, there's nothing there now and they want to add this. There's, we've already got a situation where this can only improve it. It is viewed as the minimum action necessary to, you know, bring about a positive change environmentally here, and, you know, the proposed treatment systems that are gonna be installed are in line with the Natural Features Protection Ordinance, which talks about best management practices. They're recommended by the Michigan Low Impact Development Manual. And lastly, this, not only is this project going through the NFP board and the Zoning Board of Appeals now, it goes through site plan review, it needs a permit from Eagle because of the impact on the waterway, so, you know, there's a lot of review steps involved here. So, that is all I have for comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for Pete. What kind of contaminants are running through there?
Well, the, and Tom could speak more clearly to this, but it's, it's just, you know, it's runoff, stormwater runoff from the streets that's funneled through this property right now, and there's no filtration at all. So, if you want to comment on that, that'd be great, Tom. Thank you.
So, and that's a big part of it, Pete, thanks, is the pollution that comes in from stormwater runoff from our storm drains in the street, so a lot of that comes from excess fertilizer, some of it comes from vehicles driving on the street. That includes nitrogen, phosphorus, and heavy metals. The other part is the contamination from the paper companies, which consists of PCB, among other chemicals.
What about raw sewage?
There's not raw sewage as in municipal wastewater.
Is there overflow?
Nope, there's, our storm sewers and our sanitary sewers in the city are separated, so we don't often, I'm not aware of any sanitary sewer overflows that have ever occurred in recent history here, much less along in this particular area.
I'm familiar with the old DHS building over there in Stockbridge, and quite often the creek would overflow, and there was sewage, raw sewage, that spilled up and, of course, sat there forever, and you could smell it, and of course, so where'd that come from?
I can't speak to that. I do know that it's been extensively studied. There have been a lot of different contaminants and environmental concerns identified, but I'm not aware that that one has been identified.
Okay. Thank you.
Tom, I have a question also.
Sure.
So, is this an isolated project, or is this part of a more comprehensive program where you're addressing the stormwater unoffs?
It's a little of both. It's part of a bigger picture, as in the Portage Creek stewards have other projects that they have been, and this is a pretty big group of both, largely private sector, actually, individuals that have been pushing for remediation of the creek. I know another project that they did that has, I think, been very successful, was the removal of a weir in Millen Park. It's, you can see it, if you're driving on Lover's Lane, past Millen Park, where there used to be, you could see a waterfall coming down. That was removed, and the natural floodplain was restored there, and that's one project that they've, that they were a big part of. And the work that they're doing spans different jurisdictions as well, different jurisdictions, so some of it has been within the city of Kalamazoo, some of it's in Portage, and so they have a lot of different projects that have been identified that they've been working on for quite a while. This one, it doesn't, the fund and the engineering and scientific work that's been done on this site hasn't been part of like a multi-site effort, that's all gonna be like constructed at once or anything like that. So, it is its own project, but it's also part of a grand scheme that exists, that a group has to improve Portage Creek specifically.
I have another question. So, would there, is the plan to have holding tanks placed throughout there to collect water, so it kind of slows everything down and doesn't flood south or north of Stockbridge?
It's not gonna have a major or a noticeable flood reduction impact, I wouldn't say, and it doesn't involve holding structures or anything like that. I should have described what that project actually consists of more, but it's, so the design is, the stormwater comes in to that site from Reed Ave. The pipe that it comes through is gonna be intercepted by a manhole that's gonna divert it from where it would usually dump into the creek, and it will go to what we call MTD, or manufactured treatment device, which is a manhole that has, it's specially created to make heavy, anything that'll sink out of the water, to sink to the bottom of this manhole where it can then be vacuumed out the way that a septic tank is. It also allows any floating debris, or if there's any like gasoline, or, I mean, if there's anything that floats on top of the water, oil from vehicles, then it would allow, it would allow those things to float to the top, and then the sinking debris to sink to the bottom. After the, after that MTD, it discharges into the floodplain into what are called bioswales, and they're essentially small ditches that are, that have vegetation in them, and they're specifically engineered to improve the water quality. So, there's a series of bioswales that are gonna be constructed in this floodplain area, and, excuse me, those will intercept the stormwater, and they will also take on, anytime the creek rises high enough to get into those areas, it will take on some of that floodwater to treat that as well. On the north end of the site, the bioswales flow back into the creek. The project also includes a sand area where turtles can lay eggs, and it also includes what are called hiberniculums, which are, they're natural structures that are, that can be found in natural environments where amphibians and other fauna will hibernate, lay eggs. It's habitat for animals, and also for plants along the creek.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question. And I hope we can discuss this too, Chair. We're gonna discuss it, okay. Okay. I've been using ChatGPT, so I have a couple of questions based on that, because I looked this up, this stormwater best management practices, right? This feels very nebulous to me, friend. I don't know what that means. ChatGPT.
I agree. It's a terrible, it's a terrible term, to be honest. I didn't invent it.
I'm scared.
Nobody in Kalamazoo did.
I know, so teach us.
Yeah, I can explain that a little bit.
Please, because you know what, I'm gonna tell you what it sound like.
It's vague, and it includes a lot of different things.
Yes.
So, there's temporary best management practices, BMPs, there's permanent ones. A best management practice is anything, generally, it's anything that makes runoff water either cleaner, or it reduces the amount of runoff that ends up in our streams.
Okay.
So, in this case, the treatment device, that's a BMP. The bioswales, those are a BMP.
Got it.
Even just the vegetation that's going in, that's a BMP.
Okay, so your approach to this is to attempt to reconstruct the wetland, to reconstruct it, or what?
To a degree, yes.
Okay.
It's not gonna be clearing this entire area and, you know, digging out all the dirt or moving soil around the entire thing.
Yes.
There will be some of that, but largely, a lot of this site is gonna remain undisturbed. There's only, there's hundreds of trees on this site, and I think only six or eight of them are scheduled to be removed. And those were specifically selected to be, you know, where do these trees absolutely need to be removed, and can we try, if we have to take some trees out, let's take out some of the less ecologically important ones, whether those are smaller, or if they're a species that's introduced and possibly invasive.
Okay. Let me ask this question. How much do this cost?
Right now, our estimate is, I think, I want to say it's in the ballpark of $800,000 for construction, and then that's, so that doesn't include engineering and other administrative permits, other things of that nature.
Okay. So, my fear is that you got, and this can go in the conference, I don't know, but, I mean, in our discussion, but Ms. Tina McClinton from the City Commission.
Yeah.
She comes all this, she comes regularly and talks about the stormwater issue and the flooding happening in her neighborhood, okay? Ms. Tina has come here for years explaining this, so I'm gonna tell you what it sounds like to me, so please interrupt my ignorance, if there is any, on this topic. It feels like, okay, so y'all not gonna charge the constituency, the people that live in the city of Kalamazoo, the city, you're not gonna add on extra charges for them, like for taxes or anything else to pay for this? How are we, how are we gonna pay for this? Because what it feels like to me is that, just like Mr. Work has explained here, that there has been, I mean, people have complained about it for many years, the raw sewage, all these kinds of things, there might be misconceptions, and I'm open to understanding that, again, like, excuse my ignorance, but this is what I'm telling, my perception is telling me now, that you all want to now, all of a sudden, utilize this 4.2 acres to, because of the influence that it's gonna have on Portage, what is it, Portage Creek?
Portage Creek.
Portage Creek.
Yep.
Y'all gonna address the issue as it relates to Portage Creek, but have neglected what's happening directly in the city, for the people that live in that neighborhood? And this feels really nebulous to me, and not explicit enough about how it's going to have a comprehensive benefit for the people that live in closest proximity to it. So, can you help me understand that?
Yeah, for sure.
Thank you.
First of all, I don't think that's ignorant at all.
Thank you.
I think that's a really good, well-educated question.
Thank you.
And, yeah, I'm familiar with Ms. McClinton and her things that she's brought to the City Commission.
She's amazing.
And to a lot of different groups within the city. So, this part of Portage Creek, which, by the way, yeah, it's Portage Creek, but it's the biggest tributary within the city of Kalamazoo that goes to the Kalamazoo River, so it's, yeah, I don't want that to be a misnomer, to think like, this creek belongs to Port, to the city of Portage or anything like that, but, yeah, really good question. First of all, the funding does not come from tax dollars whatsoever. It comes from damages that were issued to the paper companies immediately upstream from... from this site. There is, another point I'd like to make is that the, is that Portage Creek in this area sits only, I want to say two or three feet higher in elevation than the Kalamazoo River. That means that if the Kalamazoo River rises two or three feet, then this creek, the water in this creek has nowhere to go. And that's the cause of the flooding that we frequently see
Yes.
around the Portage Creek watershed. There's other instances of flooding in the city that can be caused by, there's a lot of different factors at play that can cause flooding. But I remember specifically what we saw last year was when the, when the hurricane hit and it took a while, but you know, there were the, there was the catastrophic rainstorms in North Carolina, but when it made its way, what was left of the hurricane, it wasn't a hurricane anymore, but when it made its way up to Michigan, it, it dropped a lot of rain, it didn't drop so much on Kalamazoo as it did around Albion, which is the headwaters of the Kalamazoo River. So it took about a week, but the Kalamazoo River rose enough that we had to put barricades up on, around Stockbridge and Crosstown, kind of on the south side of town and kind of pretty close to the area of this site because of the rising Kalamazoo River. And I've also mentioned that Portage Creek is flashy and and it's, it's very flood prone. There are a lot of storm drains in the city of Kalamazoo, also in the city of Portage and even Oshito Township that, in Texas Township, that, that go to the streets and they, they feed directly into this creek and they cause it to flood very, very easily. It's been channelized over time as well because of its use with industry. And as opposed to being like a meandering kind of river, it's, it's been dug in a straight channel and that, there's, there's so many factors that contribute to this. There, getting rid of flooding in, in that lowland area is, is a lot more complex and a lot, it would be just astronomically bigger of a project than what this project is.
To do what now? To say that last part, that was, that was deep.
To get rid of the causes of flooding of Portage Creek, south of downtown.
That's a bigger project.
That's a, it's a much bigger project. We actually have, there, there is something that's been proposed that is in the ballpark of $200 million. I don't believe it's funded at all at this time, but that would, that would be the real deal for getting rid of that.
It would cost 200 mil, we're going to have to find 200 million dollars.
This site, this project is
Okay.
an incremental improvement to the creek that uses resources that we do have with natural resource damage assessments.
Okay, well, all right, well.
I, I hope that makes, I hope that clears some things up.
You did good, you're knowledgeable and you're kind. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Well, I don't have it, but if I did, I'd hook you up. All right, so let's now to the public hearing portion of this invite and invite those in the room who wish to speak in favor of the proposal. You can come up and say your thing. Anybody wishing to speak against? No? Call in comments.
So where we normally would have the opportunity for call-ins, Ring Central is not loading properly right now, so we're unable to take any call-ins at this time.
Oh, well.
What happened?
Computer's not working is the long, the short story.
Yeah, now I will reboot it one more time while I'm over here.
But that will take some time, so we're going to move on. All right, so that would close the public hearing portion. I don't know that we need any further discussion to get to the finding of fact, so would somebody care to make a motion for the finding of fact with respect to this request?
I move that the finding of facts for 433 Reed Street shall include all the information included in the notice of public hearing dated April 23rd, 2025, and the agenda packet staff provided for this request. Thirty-seven notices of public hearing were sent, zero responses were received. Tom Palumbo with the city of Kalamazoo appeared to speak in favor, in support of this application. He described the restrictions of the parcel and he described the best management practices that are intended to be implemented for stormwater runoff at this parcel. The facts presented included regarding the circumstances and conditions that affect this included a packet from the city of Kalamazoo, including site plans, a project summary, and a wetland delineation report, which had been prepared by Kaiser and Associates, which is an environmental engineering firm. The, some of the facts presented regarding the enforcement of the ordinance, which would deprive them of the applicant of reasonably using the parcel for its intended purpose, included some of the restrictions imposed by the natural features overlay in which the parcel is located. It would appear that there aren't any alternatives to the request for this variance for the applicant's intended use of this parcel, which is to create a stormwater runoff treatment improvement. The applicant, the described that they requested relief would cause, would substantially improve the, assist the public good or the intent of the ordinance. It would improve the handling of stormwater and it would provide habitat and address untreated water running from the street into Portage Creek. There were no speakers in opposition to the application.
That is a good finding of fact, I support the finding of fact.
There you go, Gary made the second. Let's just vote on it and then we can have the discussion if we need one. I think you got to take a roll call on that one or no, Pete?
Voice vote is fine.
Voice vote is fine. All of us in favor of adopting the specific finding of fact, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. The, the finding of fact is approved, so we need a motion on the request itself.
Well, I move approval of the request.
Thank you.
I support.
Thank you. Now, does anybody have any discussion, presumably somebody with, not that I'm uninterested, with far more expertise in the natural, natural features portion of this than I have?
Well, I don't have any expertise in, in water engineering, but I formally served on the natural features review board and I was really interested in this application when I saw it. So I went and watched the YouTube of the NFP review hearing, which was quite detailed because that board goes into a lot of the natural resources issues in play. And so Tom Palumbo and Mark Kaiser appeared and, and engaged in a really detailed report to that board where they unanimously supported this based on their expertise in natural resources. And I was impressed by how many contaminants really run in the streets of a city and how those are washed primarily by rainwater and how that then enters Portage Creek and is part of a, a compounding effect of pollutants that enter Portage Creek and then other waterways as well. And so, and I, so I was, from their presentation here, from the materials we've received and from the materials I saw, I was really convinced that this is a, a, a small piece of a, a really comprehensive and somewhat overwhelming challenge we have in cleaning up waterways and, and in managing floodwaters as well, such as what we talked about impacting Stockbridge and Lake Street and the flooding there too. So for those reasons, I, I support this.
Excellent. Anybody else have anything they want to say?
No.
Go for it. Make sure your turn on.
Sure. Thank you. I'm really grateful for the opportunity to understand the magnitude of the full extent of the root cause of that, so thank you very much for that insight. Just by virtue of the way the rebellion and the activism, the resistance is set up in me, I would like to reject this application for a variety of reasons because I feel as though this particular neighborhood has been neglected for a very long time. And I take offense to the fact that it's only become an issue when private companies that are upstream from the site have taken an interest in this, when the people that live in that neighborhood have been neglected for so long, have a problem with that. But I do think that this is an incremental support to a bigger issue. And so I would be inclined to approve this from my perspective and say yes, if there were conditions that, that the city commit to working with community to mitigate the, the issue of what's happening on that part of the stream, on that part of where the flood happened, the flooding happens and the contamination is affecting people and the natural features that are in the neighborhood that mitigate these types of issues are regularly being torn down so that new developments can happen that are not going to directly benefit the people that live in that neighborhood. I have a very big problem with that, but that, of course, you know, I mean, that would be, I, I don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater, that would be silly, but I think that we need to address, I, I couldn't in good, I, this is just, it's, I think this is a difficult pace and, you know, good for you, Alan, for watching that, the Natural Features Protection Review Board and their, their, their full position on this project, but I have, I have a problem with the fact that that neighborhood has been neglected and now I think that it's offensive that this is going to happen now to protect the, what's happening upstream and now that, and who owns that property again? Who owns that property?
I believe it's the Brownfield.
Yes, it's under the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority currently and it's going to be transferred to Public Services.
See, now all of a sudden, you know, I'm, I don't like that, I don't like it.
Okay.
Yeah, what, what, tell me, I would like to.
I was just going to say, but you know, this, you know, this is, you know, these efforts are being made to
Address the issue.
Specifically address the, the runoff from the street that's already flowing through the property, you know, so that it can be cleaned up and filtered. And then that other element, which was in the packet, showed that there's going to be like a little platform built, like an observation platform, which will be something the residents in the neighborhood can use.
So then that means that the condition should also include constituent education as well. You got to bring the community into that and that's also a part of, when I did on ChatGPT, it said that you got to educate the people in addition, so you got to bring people in. I think you should bring in the Climate Crisis Coalition, whatever that new thing Jenny is running with the environmental, the climate change thing, bring all the people in, bring the community in, invite them in, some Black Lead initiatives, focus on environment, you don't got to bring Zoo City in, I know how y'all feel about us, bring somebody in that's represented and reflective of the neighborhood that's disproportionately affected by climate change and the issues that we're talking about here and overt contamination and storm runoff. I mean, we have failed in a lot of ways as a city.
Yeah, and I, and I hear everything you're saying. This project was at a bigger scale, you know, then maybe it would need more community input, but it's really not at a bigger scale. I mean, it's, they're, they're, they're not manipulating most of the property. In fact, it's a very small footprint
Good.
that they're going to be working in, as mentioned, only like six or seven trees are getting taken down, so most of the property is left untouched. And the efforts are focused on where the stormwater is coming off of, what is that, Stockbridge Avenue? Reed, I'm sorry, coming off of Reed and then flowing into the property, but yeah, Tom.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead. Yeah, I just want to speak to a couple of those things because I didn't hit, you, you had a lot of comments and I, I, there was a couple that I forgot to address.
Thank you, thank you.
The biggest one I want to address, you were talking about the neighborhood being, you know, it's, it's Edison neighborhood, it's, it's been historically, it hasn't received the investment
That's right.
that it should be receiving. Something that I want to talk about with nearby residents is we, we had four area residents come to the meeting, to the NFP meeting, and all of them were in favor of this project. They had a lot of really good questions and they were skeptical about it and, and I, I wish that Mark wasn't able, Mark Kaiser wasn't able to make it here today. He, he can speak a lot better, he's an environmental scientist who's been doing stuff like this for decades and he can speak to a lot of other things better than I can. But the, the concerns that residents have had have been things that we've talked through and, and we are looking for input from residents on this as we, you know, if, if people have comments about it, we are here to listen to that and we want to, we want to talk about what we're doing, we want people to know what we're doing. So one of the residents lives directly next to this site and has very deep roots in Kalamazoo, is strongly supportive of this and is looking forward to having this next to his property. The others were with the Edison Resident Scholars, which is a, a neighborhood group. It's not with the Neighborhood Association, it's with the Kalamazoo Literacy Council, but they're an Edison Neighborhood specific organization and they were in support of it as well. I talked to him for a long time afterwards. And then the, the last thing I, I really like to add is that I live in the Edison neighborhood too and I, I see the, the environmental problems that we have in that neighborhood and it is, it's, it's very frustrating and even maddening, honestly.
Yes.
And, yeah, I completely agree that, that the neighborhood hasn't been treated the way that it should be treated. I, I don't, I don't see that with this project.
Yeah.
And, and, yeah, and the other thing I, I hadn't, I failed to mention is that, yeah, it has a walking path as part of it and a boardwalk, so it, it can be accessed by residents and there will also be some degree of educational signage that is put on there. So it does have that education piece as well.
That's wonderful. And again, I really appreciate your transparency, that I, thank you, I, I agree with what you're saying and that's why, like, I said I will be supportive of this, but I had, I would be remiss to not have said what I said about that neighborhood being divested from and neglected in the way that, I mean, I see daily because I own property there, so, or my organization does, so thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. I'll just say that I also live in the neighborhood and it needs attention, it needs more than this bit, but this is a place to start.
Yep.
I agree with the report, I agree with the speaker, staff's report is good, obviously everybody else, so I'm going to vote in favor of it. I think we just need to take a vote, which means Pete.
Well, can we, I need to add conditions. Can we add conditions?
You can move to add conditions.
Okay.
What conditions are you looking for?
All right, the conditions that I'm looking for are as follows. I think that this needs to be a part of, I think a more comprehensive plan needs to be added to, yes, with the condition that the residents, the city in total, is sent out information, just transparency about the full plan for the stormwater management, mitigation and the contaminant mitigation for that particular neighborhood and what, like, where is the plan, some type of action plan for that? For that $200 million, I think that we need to try to locate that money to address the root cause. So I don't know exactly how to say that, but something about a commitment to addressing the comprehensive issue and not just this particular part of the issue. of the issue needs to be added into this, into my yes.
So, some sort of educational mailer talking about the projects, the potential cost, the plan, that sort of thing.
Yes, what it requires so that people can self-advocate for that happening. Like, we have been actively farming in that neighborhood since 2012, 13, 2013, and have like, have had operating farms probably since 2020. And that runoff issue for, for, like, for black tops and all of that, that affects us also at our 1316 Mill Street property. The issues that we have had to navigate in the five years since we've been doing that have required the support from a hydrogeologist. So, I'm not a hydrogeologist. I'm just an urban farmer, like, in a big mouth. So, I need more help understanding the nuance. And so do the people of this community. They need more education surrounding what's even happening. The bulk of the people in this community are not hydrogeologists. They don't know even what that is. I'm not taking anything away from people. But it needs to be a dialectically well-thought-out, transparent mailer that's sent out to people, letting them understand the full complexity of what's happening with the floodwater management, just the way that, just you simply explained it just now, that the root cause is an alban and all of the layers of that. So, again, people can advocate on behalf of themselves and come to meetings like this and natural features protection, there's that. I think that we should also have, we should, because of the environmental justice aspect of this and the fact that communities of color specifically and socio-economically disadvantaged communities are specifically deal with the issue of climate change, I think that, the issues of climate change, I think that there should also be some type of a requirement that there's an equity piece attached to this, too. You need to bring some more people color into this conversation. And not just people that are representative figureheads. Why don't you just even ask Ms. Tana to be a part of this, if she want to be? You know, you need to ask some people that have been actively advocating for this, like, bring them in, even if we don't like what they're saying all the time, like, they matter. And that's what I think, so.
Thank you. Charlie, how do we deal with her proposed amendment to the motion?
Mr. Chair, before we go into that, I just want to mention that there was a very detailed presentation done for the Natural Features Protection Review Board, which included a lot of graphics of what exactly is being done. And the planning staff is not supportive of putting conditions on this. This is, this is not that big of a project. So, I'm just putting that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, I am. Hillary, can we talk about it? Tony Bear?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
I'm going to try to give a summary here of what I understand.
Yes, sir.
To be your motion.
Yes, sir.
Okay?
Yes. Because I probably didn't say none of that right, but go ahead.
Well, you've said a lot there and I'm trying to condense that all down into a motion. So, it's possible I might say something in a way that was not what you meant to say.
Yes.
But I think the, the overall focus of what you were aiming at was that you want some education of the public or information provided to the public as to how this fits into a, an overall or long-term plan.
Yes.
To address
Yes.
The issues with the creek
Yes.
in that neighborhood.
Absolutely. Yes. Yes, sir.
All right.
So, that's a, so is it a competing motion that needs a second or?
That would need a second because she's asking to amend the, the principal motion to add a condition.
So, she needs a second for her amendment. Okay.
Yeah.
Does anybody?
Or the, the, the movement who made the motion can, can accept the condition, can accept that amendment.
Looking at you, Alan.
Can I second myself?
No. You can make the motion, can't second it.
Okay.
No, I, I don't accept the amendment. This is a zoning board and the matter before us is a matter that's been reviewed by the NFP Review Committee. And, and the action before us, I think, is, is, is a zoning matter.
Fair enough. Anybody else wish to second the motion?
There would need to be a second. There does need to be a second.
Does anybody else wish to second Remy's motion?
Okay.
Unfortunately, no. So.
Okay, but wait a minute. Well, then I'll say this on record. I think it's unfair that company, private companies can pay for this, can afford to pay for this. And since people in the community don't have the information, the full complement of information in addition to not having that access to resources, they're going to have to continue to just suffer while other people benefit from this that live up the creek. And that's a problem for me. So, I need that on record.
Well, this is, this is, this is being paid for by settlement funds from polluters, effectively.
So what?
This is not, this is, this is being paid for, I, this is not, I don't name a company, this is not Pfizer deciding they want to pollute in the creek, so please let us come do this. No, this is 100 years ago, Paper Company was like, we're just going to dump this stuff out back, the hell with anything else, and then lived it, left it to us to fix it. This isn't a fix, but it's getting there. Thank you. I think we can just take the vote on it. Do you like to do the roll call, Pete?
We'll start on this end of the dais. Han?
Yes.
Harrington?
Pass.
Yes.
No. Is that, is that an abstention or no?
Yes, I'm abstaining. I'm abstaining. I'm abstaining.
She's abstaining.
Kohler?
I'm a yes. I approve.
Work?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Thank you. That carries four to nothing with one abstention, which means it was approved. Congratulations, guys. All right. Number two, would you care to read the second request into the record?
All right. An application for variance provisions of the zoning ordinance has been filed with the Zoning Board of Appeals by Caleb Salter on behalf of the property owner, I'm sorry, Caleb Salter, at ZBA number 25-06-08 at 2139 Ridge Road. The applicant is requesting, on behalf of the property owners, requesting a dimensional variance from Appendix A, Chapter 5, Section 5.1, to authorize release of, excuse me, relief of a 7.5 feet, of 7.5 feet from the average front building setback of 9.5 feet. Please note that this request will not change the zoning classification of the properties.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Before he'll get you going, what is your name?
Christopher Macsurak. I am the homeowner.
Christopher, how do we spell your last name? Thank you very much.
Looks like Max Surrack.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, your time has started. Whenever you're ready, assuming that Pete is done messing with you, because then Shelby can restart the timer. Thank you, Shelby.
Okay. All right. So, I'm moving to Kalamazoo. I found 2139 Ridge Road in West Natchal and fell in love with it. And it's a really interesting home, built on a hill in a kind of a unique neighborhood. And as such, it's presented some challenges. This is just my info there. Just a couple quotes by the steward, when she was looking for a place in the Hamptons, she said, get me a rec on the nicest street. And I thought that was kind of cool. And I'll just, it was a little long, just in, in terms of time. So, I'm really asking just to replace an existing detached carport with a new two-car garage that will be no closer to the street than the current structure of the carport. I've talked to my neighbors and certainly access to emergency vehicles is a concern on that street. It's like a dead-end street with a little turnaround and it's a little tight. It's a little different. And I certainly love the street. I think it's so cool. And I don't want to do anything that would change the, the charm of it or the feel of it. I want to be part of this neighborhood. And I understand that the folks at 2220 have emailed their support. Their house is like so cool. And that was, you know, I, I see some of the other homes on the block. And it was just really, really exciting to find this home. I'm doing a renovation loan. So, a lot of the things that I have to, there's a lot that I have to do that's sort of guided by, by HUD consultant and the budget and all of that. So, it's, it's, it's not like they just give you a bunch of money and they just knock yourself out. And the, the new garage was key in getting the home to appraise for the purchase price plus all the money going into the home. And if it was just a, like a parking pad or something like that, the numbers just wouldn't add up. So, an enclosed garage, which I think we all kind of wanted winter, especially is what's being requested. So, this is the current carport. It's dilapidated. It would cost more to, to fix it than, than it would be worth. The back half is actually just a cantilevered wood deck. The roof is decayed. I'm looking for something that is enclosed. But the, the main thing in question is the, the distance from the street. And zoning would require it to be nine and a half feet. It's currently at two feet. So, that's where the seven and a half, maybe seven feet or seven and a half feet of, I forget the word, forgiveness or relief, it comes into play. I've got some more pictures here. So, you can see that the structure there, the carport, where it sits from the street. Again, it would be no further from the street than that, which I guess would be, well, it's hard to really point to it. My neighbors here as well, Chris and Gary, they will sort of speak to what they're expect, I hope, to speak to their expectations of, of what they would think is appropriate. But I definitely don't want to go any closer to the street. One of the reasons, there's more pictures showing why you can only go so far back on the property. It's, it's, the entire property is on a hill. And this is the, the amount of space between the carport currently and, and the house. So, to go further back gets harder. Or you just have a garage that's super close to, to the house. I essentially just want to replace, again, that carport structure. It wouldn't be cantilevered anywhere. It would be a full, it's almost like a two-story garage, but the, the first is just going to be foundation. Again, some more pictures. On the side, you can see a neighboring garage and sort of how it's built on the hill. This is another garage that's, that's on the street. You can see that, that's quite close to the street. Not asking for anything like that. And then another home on the street. This is directly next door. And my garage would be essentially in line with, with where theirs is in relation to the street. This is not an actual plan. This is just a, a visual aid for the type of foundation that, that, that would be needed. And it's also about $70,000 is budgeted for the garage, which is, most of that is the foundation. And then this is my garage. I currently live in Chicago. I'm moving here from Chicago. I have a 20 by 20 garage. It's quite, quite modest. So, I'm, I'm, I can make do with that. And you can fit two cars in there. So, just to give an idea of what I'm envisioning, the, the style of the garage, it's, it's quite basic. And that's the end of the presentation.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Pete and staff have any comments?
Just a few comments here. Let me get myself organized. Okay. So, a lot of the items, the, the challenges were pointed out by the property owner regarding the topographic change from Ridge Road to Bronson Boulevard. Ridge Road is, is a plateau and it drops off on both sides. This challenge of building on a hillside is, is evident and the positioning of the home so close to the road to begin with, and the garages being right up at the edge of the property lines in, in multiple circumstances. So, it's, it's, it is a unique arrangement. It's unlike many other neighborhood streets around the city because of, you know, because of the topography, it's, it's created this, this condensing of the structures closer to the, you know, the, the top of the hill, the plateau. So, under the special circumstances, it was acknowledged, the, the topographic challenge, also the, the placement of the existing home, which, which the property owner has pointed out also that shifting the garage back would put it right against the, the face of the home. And there wouldn't be any separation there. So, you know, that's not a circumstance that we, we want to see. Also, pushing the garage further back would require an even larger retaining wall type structure. I'm not even sure, looking at the picture that's up there right now, how that even holds a car. The, the wood decking that's up, that's, makes up the floors.
I guess it's, it works, or it has. But, yeah, it looks a little, my bedroom is like right there. So, if it comes crashing down while I'm sleeping. But it, it looks really cool. I mean, I, the neighborhood reminds me of so many cool places in various cities. It's a little bit like the Hollywood Hills in a way, driving around there.
Yeah.
And it's, you know, it's really cool looking, but it's just, it's falling apart and it was never structurally sound. And it's, it's not open. So, you know, I'm essentially just, you know, want to have what most folks like is a decent two-car garage.
Yep. Which is, yeah, which is pretty commonplace. It's, you know, it's nice in the wintertime. But, but, yeah, but not, not moving the garage back would, would limit the new retaining wall to the air. And it wouldn't create any more environmental impact on the hillside. So, and it does not, based on staff's opinion adversely affect the adjacent properties as they are similarly built to this site. And lastly, as was already mentioned, there was the, the one letter of support or email of support that came in from a property owner just down the street. So, that is all I've got for staff comments.
Thank you. Now, I will open it up to the public in the room. If they, anybody wishes to come up and speak in favor of the proposal, they can do so. Make sure you give your address and say your name. You also have to sign in.
My name is Chris Patchell. I live directly across from the garage project. And you notice I'm speaking in the positive because I'm delighted to have Christopher owning this property. It's been vacant for a long time. It was very difficult for me to tell from the letter I got from the city as to exactly where this potential end of the garage was. This happens to be at a bottleneck. There's a telephone pole opposite side. And if we had a, a car parked there by chance, an ambulance could not get through to the last three houses. So, I'm here because I'm retired and I can kill some time to come down. And I just wanted to verify where the property line, because I took a picture today of exactly the same picture he had at the start. And Christopher's made clear he doesn't intend to go any further out than where the existing carport is. But if there's nothing actually in writing or whatever, I just want to make sure when construction starts, there's not a problem. So, that's my only question is, is where in fact does this variance allow the garage to start? the garage to start?
It would be a very specific amount of a variance. So if it's seven and a half feet, I think it is to come to the two-foot or so setback now, that's what it would be. And obviously, somebody's going to have to police that, presumably you, calling the city to let them know, hey, it's too close, so they can come out and deal with it. But that's, that's a discussion, obviously, you can talk to Pete about afterwards and he can give you more. He can tell you now. I don't care.
Yeah. If I can just answer real quick. So there is a, a survey drawing showing the exact position of where the garage will go. And I can, I can always share that with you. But yeah, we do have specifics. So there is, not only has it been surveyed and those survey stakes are out there right now, but a drawing has been prepared showing precisely where the new garage would be located.
Okay. That's, that's fine. That's, that's all I really want. I want to make sure the fire hydrant wasn't covered up or anything like that. So I think you've answered my questions.
And obviously, the applicant would be well advised to not put it in the wrong spot lest the city make them move it at some great expense.
Sir, I'm, I'm sorry. What was your name?
Chris Patchell.
What was it?
Chris Patchell.
Okay.
Patchell. Thank you. Were there any others in the house to speak in favor? Anybody who wishes to speak against it? Are we going to be able to have call-ins, Pete?
We are unable to have call-ins for this case.
No. Okay. All right. Well, there you go. All right. So I'll close the public hearing portion. I don't know that we need any discussion to get to the finding of fact portion. So does somebody want to make a motion on that?
I'll, I'll do the finding of fact.
Terrific.
I move that the finding of facts for 2139 Ridge Wood shall include all information included in the public notice hearing dated May 28, 2025, and the agenda packet staff provided for this request, as well as the homeowner's presentation. Twenty-two notices of public hearing were sent and one response was received. Alice and Mike Kremling of 20, 2220 Ridge Road was in support, as well as Chris Patchell. The homeowner, Chris Mazurk, gave us a presentation as to why the existing carport should be removed and explained, or showed us the, the garage and where it would go. There were no call-ins and no one spoke against the variance. That's finding of fact.
Anybody wish to second that?
I second.
Thank you. I think we could probably just vote on the finding of fact and then we can move on to the other motion portion. All is in favor of adopting that as the finding of fact. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed, approved. All right. So then we need a motion and a second regarding the pending request. Would somebody please make a motion? I can't do it myself.
I motion to approve the pending request.
Thank you.
I second.
Excellent. So we have a motion and a second. Before we get to voting, I'll just say it like, this is what I would say on this. This is sort of a request that's the perfect example, I think, of why we have to, not have to. It's a perfect example of zoning issues that require a variance because there's an existing non-conforming use. To replace a dilapidated version of that, you cannot essentially possibly bring it into conforming. Your only choice is to continue with a non-conforming use of the property. This isn't like where you put the garage on the wrong spot on a flat square piece of property and it needs to move from here to there. This is a, you can't really put it anywhere else. Through no fault of the, the property owner, there's a house in the way, there's a massive slope. It's fairly narrow at the top, too, so it sort of limits a lot of what you can do there. It's a perfect example. The staff report kind of nails it all and I don't have any disagreements with it, which is why I'm going to vote to approve it.
I agree. It's a, it's a classic zoning variance case.
Yeah. I agree as well.
I also agree.
And somehow they avoided having to take on the fact that it's in a natural features overlay, is it?
That was my thought with the amount of slope involved. Is it not a, an NFP issue?
I'm not trying to create work for him.
No, if it's, if it's built in the same spot, I don't think that was triggering the, you know, that level of review.
So if it was a, hey, you can't build it two feet or whatever, you got to build it four, that could cause that problem to arise then.
Correct. And if, yeah, and if, if there is any questions raised about that when it comes in, you know, when the building permit comes in, then it'll be shipped over for our in-house staff to look at.
So it's truly the, was it the least intrusive or whatever that language is used or to the property?
I believe it, it's not altering the slope in any way or changing the slope. The slope's going to change the same, or stay the same, rather. So I, my understanding of the National Features Protection Ordinance, that wouldn't necessarily trigger anything.
I had the same thought, but I was like, they must know what they're doing if it didn't go there first. Did anybody else wish to speak? No? Pete, you want to take a vote?
And we'll start at the far end. Sylvester?
Yes.
Work?
Yes.
Holder?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Pond?
Yes.
That is approved. Five to nothing. Congratulations. Make sure you build it in the right spot. That's what I would say. Thank you. So we'll move on to number three on the agenda. If you wish to read that into the record.
Absolutely. An application for a variance for provision, excuse me, for provisions of the zoning ordinance has been filed with the zoning board of approve, appeals by Jesus Baraza. Um, the, sorry, ZBA number twenty, goodness, 250609, at 4423 West KL Avenue. Mr. Baraza is Baraza. Am I saying that right? Is it Baraza?
Baraza.
Baraza. Okay. Thank you. Is requesting a variance from Appendix A, Chapter 4, Section 4.3, J7, to allow for an outdoor temporary sales use for food truck to operate in the parking lot at 4423 West KL Avenue from June 13, 2025 to December 13, 2025 for six months. All right. Please note that this request will not change the zoning classification of the properties.
Excellent. Thank you. I assume you're the applicant. You got 10 minutes. Go ahead and tell us what we need to know, sir.
Get into it.
I need to open there or?
What do you want to tell us in support of your, of your application?
Well, so I lived for all my life on the website area, you know. So now I live in the Arcadia, Arcadia neighborhood for two years. So that's why, the other reason, because I know the area very well, you know. And I want to start with the six months because I don't got much money to, to rent the, the whole building, the whole building. And I start talking with my friend Roy. He owns the whole building, you know. And maybe after the six months, maybe I can rent the spa and make like dining, dining, you know, like, like the people eat there, you know, and use the bathroom, you know, and put my food truck aside, like the little brother before, you know, if you, if you know the food trucks, you know. And that's why I want to, to be there, you know. So, because I know the area, you know. And I want, I want, I want to, when people think about the Chino's Kitchen, because that's how, that's my name, that I want they think like I'm from here, Kalamazoo, you know, from the Kalamazoo community, you know.
Very good.
You know, so maybe in the future, I can open my own restaurant and make more jobs here, you know. So that's good, you know. So I don't know. You can ask me.
Okay. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank, I don't, I don't know that you need to say anything else. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Pete, did you, staff need to, want to make any comments on it?
Yeah. So Mr. Baraza utilized the 30 days, which, which can be administratively, administratively approved, to have the food truck there. And it worked out quite well. So he then came back to the city and said, well, how do I get more time? And I said, well, that's all that can be administratively approved. You can, you know, you'd have to go through the zoning board of appeals. And, you know, if you do that, that's going to require that you go through site plan review, which, you know, which is something I'm going to bring up towards the end of my, my discussion here. But yeah, so the goal is to provide Mr. Baraza with time to complete the site plan review process and, you know, and have his food truck be a semi-permanent use on the property as long as the property owner will allow it to be there, you know. And, you know, if it works out where Mr. Baraza ends up leasing the vacant space in the building, then that would be even, even better. But that's, you know, doesn't, that necessarily doesn't have to happen. The example that Mr. Baraza mentioned, Los Brothers on Portage Street, they started with a food truck, then they purchased the property and cooked and sold the food from the food truck using the building as indoor seating and restrooms until they got to the point they could build out a commercial kitchen. So I think Mr. Baraza is hoping that eventually that's what this would lead to. And which, which, you know, we, we all would like that to happen. So anyways, so looking at the, you know, the review criteria, because technically this is a variance to allow a time extension, you know, the, the applicant is, is working out, you know, the lease arrangements with the property owner. The property owner did provide that letter of support that was circulated via email. I also put hard copies on the, on the dais tonight. So the applicant would like the opportunity to be able to continue to build the customer base as they go through this site plan review process by being allowed to operate during this period of time. And as I mentioned at last month's meeting, it is a minimum of two to three months to go through the site plan review process right now. Part of that is just the volume of projects that we are going through. Some are much more complex than others, but they are all put in line as they come in the door. So, you know, it, it would be quite a delay, you know, to the applicant as far as being able to operate the food truck there. So I just wanted to make reference to that. And so as far as the other criteria, you know, as far as impacts on adjacent properties, there was no complaints when Mr. Baraza did operate there. There was no negative feedback when the notices went out for this hearing tonight to allow for this time extension. So, you know, the impacts are not evident. We'll see when we open up the public hearing if there's anything else that comes out. And then as far as it being consistent with the ordinance, you know, the ordinance is designed to regulate development in an orderly manner. And this time extension to allow for completion of this review and approval process seems appropriate. The one condition I would ask is that, you know, if the board is looking to approve this, that they put a condition on there that, that the application for site plan review be filed within 45 days. So that will provide a month and a half for you to work out the final details with your landlord. And that's all I have for comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I will open it up to the public and invite anybody in the house who wishes to speak in favor of this application.
Hi, I'm Rex Brugman. I live at 806 Ellendale in the Arcadia neighborhood. And I'm the current president of the Arcadia Neighborhood Association. And I'm here to speak in support of what Jesus is trying to do. I have not reviewed the relevant ordinance and I don't have a very technical approach tonight. I'm in favor of this. Well, first of all, I think the location is fine where it is. They're down, I guess it's where it's turned into KL. That location's fine. Beyond that, I just know Jesus and Iris. They've moved into a house in the Arcadia neighborhood that's right on West Michigan. They are the bomb. They're great people. I've eaten the tacos. Tacos are wonderful. I love them. I love to watch their beautiful children walk to Arcadia Elementary every day during the school year. And I want to be supportive of them as my neighbors. So I don't think there's anything bad about this. I think they're fantastic. You know, I know that Jesus and Iris are grinding. Jesus, last I knew, was also working at JBS. And, you know, I talked to Iris about it and it's like, it's all positive. Hey, he gets the best cuts of meat, you know. And so I'm all about these people and anything I can do to be supportive just as a neighbor, that's what I want to do. I'll take any questions, but you get my vibe on this. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Rex. Thank you, Rex. Anybody else wish to speak in favor? Anybody else wish to speak against the applicant, application, sorry? No. And we already determined there were going to be no call-in comments. So we'll close the public portion here. I don't know that we need any real discussion on this before we move to the finding of fact, do we? We didn't have any questions for him. All right. Who wants to move for the?
Are we going to have discussion about?
We'll discuss it after we do the finding of fact and then somebody motions to approve. Then we'll discuss it for sure.
All righty. Okay. I move that the finding of facts for, are we at that point?
Yes, ma'am.
All righty. Very good. I move that the finding of facts for 4423 West KL Avenue shall include all the information included in the notice of public hearing dated May 28, 2025, and the agenda packet staff provided for this request. Fifteen notices of public hearing were sent and one response was received from Roy Almaguer. I think I'm saying that right. Forgive me if I'm not. At 4423, for, he's in support of, for this project. At 4423 West KL Avenue, he's in support. A public hearing was held before the board. Public comments were accepted, as were additional documents and voice messages as follow. Just for the record again, the, we don't know if there were any voice messages, but Rex Brugman came to be in support here. And we have at least one letter that's in support as well. The public comments that were in support were talking specifically about the quality of the food, the quality of relationship and the connectedness to community that this particular endeavor will bring to the neighborhood. And it's just a good fit in all the ways. In addition to all the things that I've mentioned, the finding of fact will also include that the facts presented regarding the circumstances or conditions of the property or structures that are special circumstances or condition not commonly found on lots or other structures in the same zone district that make this request unique are that, you know, city staff spoke to already an existing precedent with Los Brothers. Is that what it is? That has a similar situation happening, close proximity? Is that right? Where's this, where's Los Brothers?
Well, not, not close proximity, but, but similar arrangement.
Similar arrangement.
And then I referenced last month's case with the food trailer.
Okay.
At Lespin's Market.
Okay, very good. The facts presented regarding the cause of special circumstances are that after having operated a temporary license, that this variance for 30 days, that this variance will allow them to be able to get a temporary use of the property for six months as they go through the site plan review process to get a commercial kitchen. So they are hoping to potentially open up a brick and mortar facility. Is that right? To be able to have bathrooms and all the other things attached to being able to operate a fully functioning restaurant. But in the interim, they will operate this food truck for six months in order to, again, go through the site plan review process and go through the development with that moving forward and be able to still operate a food business. All righty. The facts presented regarding whether the action requested is the minimum action that will make it possible to use the lot or structure in a manner that does not negatively impact the public, it means the spirit the spirit of the ordinance, um, are, the city staff has already noted that the truck has been legally in operation since late March and has had no complaints, um, that have been received. Furthermore, staff observed that the, um, site was kept clean. Um, the facts presented- Oh, okay. The facts presented regarding whether the granting of the variance will adversely affect adjacent land in a material way. Also, granting the variance according to city staff report, um, will be consistent with the purpose and intent of the ordinance to regulate development. This is request for a time extension for the food truck to complete the site plan review to become a permanent addition to the site. Um, so we've already gone over that. Um, should I read this letter?
No, you don't have to read the letter. You mentioned that there was a letter of support, and I think Pete said it was made available.
Okay, well, that's good. Okay, so it's made available. This is the finding of fact.
Thank you. Anybody want to second it?
I second.
Thank you. We could probably just vote on it, and I believe we determine that can be a voice vote. Uh, all those in favor of approving the finding of fact for this request, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Approved by a voice vote. All right, so we need a motion on the request itself, and staff asked if that motion could include a condition needs to file for site plan review within 45 days. I think I worded that right, Pete.
Correct.
So we can have discussion?
And then we can discuss it.
Okay. We can discuss what, before that becomes the motion, oh, that's the motion?
That would be the motion, then we can discuss it. I'm just saying that Pete's asking the, and I, and I think, and I'll say, I think the reason for the 45 days is to make them, make sure they get their stuff in with enough time to get approved, uh, but also giving them some time to, uh, to work out further arrangements as needed. So, I, I think the time request is, is a reasonable one to put in the specific, in the motion.
I don't think they should have a condition for that. I think, and if you do, it needs to be a little, they need a little bit more time. I think you should add a little bit more time.
I'd like to make a motion.
Go for it.
I move to approve ZBA 250609 at 4423 West KL Avenue, and the application will be filed within 45 days from today. That way, the, there's, there's an end date to it, so.
So you don't think they should have more time?
Well, let's, is there a second to that motion, then we can discuss the portions of it.
Y'all are a trip, bro.
Yeah, I second that motion, and then we can discuss it.
Thank you.
You can better, I, I think it, I think the intent behind that is to, is to get the, the process started, because the site plan review process takes time. And so I think it's to encourage the applicant to, um, to get the ball rolling in a timely way. So I think it's beneficial to the applicant, and I think it was meant as a friendly condition.
Yeah.
That's the spirit in which I took it.
Yes. Is the, and I, I obviously agree, because I think it's a reasonable thing. I'm not tied necessarily to the 45 days, so I'm, I'm curious. I, I want you to try to convince me of something different.
I'm not trying to convince nobody of nothing. I'm just saying that as someone who is working on a development right now, 45 days might be too much of a time crunch. I would, I think they need a little bit more time potentially. If, I mean, I, why don't you just even ask them? Like, how, did you, did you ask them?
Mr. Sheriff, if I, I could just-
Yes, sir.
-add a comment. So, the site plan review process, we did, so Remy Harrington has businesses that have been through site plan review.
Mm-hmm.
We have, we have made some changes to the process. It now starts with the, with what's called an application and checklist. So, there doesn't, there doesn't need to be a plan submitted with the initial application. It's just got to have all the, you know, information on what the project is all about, what are the, what are the elements that need to be and will be included on the site plan, but it doesn't have to have the site plan, and that is what takes the time.
That's right.
I think you're getting that as-
So you're saying that, that since that process, that protocol has been changed, that 45 days is sufficient now?
So, I'm saying the 45 days is just to submit the initial application and checklist.
Okay.
And then after we do the checklist meeting, then they'll have time to put together the plan and submit the plan. So I just am making sure we have a hard and fast date that this process is going to start.
Okay.
I, I don't think it's creating a hardship to-
Okay.
-put that 45 minute, 45-day thing in, and I, and I can see exactly where you're coming from, because you went through the process the way it used to work.
Yes, yes, I did.
Yep.
Okay, and so you've changed it?
Yes.
Okay, well, all right, I'll withdraw that then.
So you're, just to be clear, because I've never been through it, the 45 days is design, is thinking in terms of the, the expiration date of this, in order to make sure everything is in motion and approved at the right time, you need to start the process in about 45 days, more or less?
Yes, yes. Well, this is a catalyst to make sure that the application does come in the door, so.
I suppose we can just ignore that portion of it and say, "I'm only going to operate here for six months, and then we'll go somewhere else."
It's okay. All right.
But I'm not worried about that. Excellent. All right, so she's withdrawn that, so then there was, uh, I guess we can just discuss the over, because we had a motion and a second with the 45 days. Um, okay, so then the discussion portion, uh, kind of seems to me, and Pete can just confirm this, this is basically the same application we had last month, just at a different location with different applicants. Yeah.
I just am not for putting no added undue pressure on this brother, period. That's all I'm saying.
And if, and at least to speak to that, I, I do want to ask Pete, um, I think when the folks came before us last month, they may have already been in motion on the site plan review, so it wasn't, you didn't need any conditions, because they had already started it.
Correct. We, we had already had the initial discussion. They had already, uh, you know, sat down with our site plan review coordinator to work on the application, so it was, it was moving along.
So if I remember correctly, they were probably expecting to get approved, I think at this point, probably in a month or two at most. Uh, and that was ultimately just a stopgap. Okay. Um, thank you. Uh, I do, I do appreciate the concern that Ms. Harrington raises, um, which is why if there was a different date that was better, I'd, I'd advocate for it.
Thank you.
And I'm not saying this one is perfect. I'm not saying another one is perfect, but this is a, to get the ball rolling kind of date. Um, and I, given what I recall from last month, um, the question I asked is, they were already in motion last month, so they didn't need the, the timelines put in there.
Yeah.
It seems a little more appropriate here. I don't have any doubts that the applicant is going to get it in gear anyway. This is more of a, hey, just, just remember. Um, what else was I going to say? Oh, I always talk, uh, about being consistent with things, and in the sense of consistency, we essentially approved this one last month with virtually the same facts. Uh, that would be real lousy of me to reverse myself now, which I won't, uh, which is why I'm going to vote in favor of approving the request. Anybody else wish to speak on it? Fantastic. Pete, take the vote, before anybody changes their mind.
We'll start with, we'll start with Vork for the vote?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Han?
Yes.
Harrington?
Come on the guamida. Yes.
Thank you. I was like, wait, I didn't take Spanish, but a long time ago. Um, yes, I'm a yes. Uh, thank you. By my, by my count, that is approved. Five votes to none. Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, you'll obviously be working with Pete on that one. All right. Uh, let's turn, I'm going to get this application out of the way, so we can move on to our last application, if you wish to read that in.
Absolutely.
Caffeine this late in the day?
Righty.
Come on. Yes, go for it.
Okay. An application for variance for provisions of the zoning ordinance has been filed with the zoning board of appeals by B Diamond Infra LLC. I hope I said that right, my goodness. Um, oh my gosh. Oh my god. Okay, ZBA number 25-06-10 at 1516 Rockledge Court. The applicant is requesting a use variance from Appendix A, Chapter 4, Section 4.2, W5, to authorize a variance to construct a new 150-foot, um, monopole-style telecommunications tower at this location, which would replace the current 150-foot lattice-style tower. Sounds intense. All right, please note that this request will not change the zoning classification of this property. Love this.
Thank you very much. Obviously, Pete is working to get the applicant set up.
Yes. Oh, Jesus.
Yep. Good evening. I'm Bev Francis. I'm outside counsel to B Diamond Infrastructure. We look forward to the opportunity to discuss with you this existing tower and address the continuing, uh, issues that are plaguing this tower and present to you B Diamond's proactive solution to resolve these issues. The tower is a existing 150-foot self-support tower. It is actually 53 years old, and AT&amp;T is the only carrier that has co-located on the tower since 2005 for 20 years, primarily as a result of the issues facing the tower. Now, the tower being 53 years old is something I can identify with. You hit a certain peak, just like inanimate objects, and I do, at 50, things don't work correctly. You know, you have muscle loss, you have deterioration, and as a result, the technology in 1972 has dramatically changed to the better. And, as a result, this tower does not meet the current engineering standards. And as a result, it doesn't allow AT&amp;T to upgrade its equipment at this site in order to serve and continue to serve this critical portion of your community. And additionally, as you know, your code provides that, uh, they encourage co-location on towers so that you don't face a proliferation of tower. So as a result of working with the property owner, as a result of working with AT&amp;T, B Diamond has created a proactive solution, get ahead of the issue that we all know needs to be addressed, and that is to construct and design, design and construct a state-of-the-art 150-foot monopole. And that monopole will be the same height as existing tower, yet it has the technology, the advancements that Katie with B Diamond will discuss with you. It'll also allow AT&amp;T to do its upgrades, so that as continuing advancement in technology occurs, they can come in and increase the technology available at this site. And even more excitingly, it gives the opportunity to bring into this community two additional wireless carriers, at least, as co-location. So, one thing I'd like to discuss very quickly before Katie explains the site in greater detail, there will be no additional services required than those can do right now being proposed and being used by the existing tower. The, utilizing the same access drive, requiring only one service truck every approximately month, maybe six weeks, just to check the technology and the equipment, and as a result, not being a manned or occupied shelter, it does not require water or wastewater treatment. I'd like to introduce Katie Harms with B Diamond. They'll walk you through several of the elements.
Hi, I'm Katie Harms. I'm with B Diamond. I'm the site acquisition manager there. This is an overview of what we're looking at currently. So you can see the existing tower is the diamond, right there in the middle of the screen. The proposed tower, as Bev mentioned, is going to be 12, 12 foot to the east, um, to, to build a monopole there. This is a side-by-side comparison. Currently, like Bev mentioned, there's only one carrier on the tower. It's AT&amp;T. The new tower would allow for multiple carriers to co-locate on the, the infrastructure. We do have a letter of support from AT&amp;T that allow, that mentions basically that they can no longer upgrade their equipment, and so this would allow them to upgrade their equipment to the current standards of data coverage, um, to help the, the surrounding residents of Kalamazoo. This is also a engineer letter. Um, it basically states, because there's always the concern of a tower falling. We know that you guys had, you know, some weather that hit just recently. Um, this basically states that the fall zone is 16 feet. The tower would basically crumple over like a straw. So you're not going to have a complete tower falling on anybody's properties. This is a, these are photo simulations that we did, so you guys can see the, the side-by-side comparison of what we're looking at. The three, the one, two, and three will show you exactly where we took the pictures at. So the first picture is along Rockledge Road, um, and you can see the existing tower there, as well as the new tower. This is another, um, another viewpoint. This is the entrance to the apartments there at the bottom of the hill, and this would be the new tower. And then the third picture, um, is right here along Alamo Avenue. So you have the existing tower and the proposed. We also asked the AT&amp;T to provide frequency maps, so that you can see the current coverage and what the coverage would be without the tower or the future coverage. So, this is a, um, basically a separation map. Part of your ordinance requires a separation map to be, um, presented. Um, the site is in the middle of this ring. There is a site that's, um, just inside the mile radius, but it is in county property. So here is our coverage map. So the site we're discussing is right, the green blob right there in the middle. This is coverage maps that we received from RF engineers at AT&amp;T. You can see that the current coverage covers most of what you need. Once you get up north more into the county, you get less coverage. Without this tower, without the coverage from AT&amp;T, you would have nothing in that area, in a much-needed area for coverage. I'll hand this back to Bev.
Thanks, Katie. Now, the important part of this also is the critical demand for coverage. As you all may know from your personal experience, there's been a dramatic escalation of the use of smartphones and wireless devices. You can see the increase in graphical from 2009 to projected 2040. What that means is that your fellow residents and your citizens of Kalamazoo are requiring seamless wireless connectivity with the average Kalamazoo household having a minimum of five, possibly seven wireless devices. Think about your own households. Number smartphones, number iPads, Ring doorbells, systems and so forth. Access, uh, there's over 60% of the households have disconnected the online phone lines and critically have disconnected because of the high cost of wired broadband, which is a impactful issue on the underserved that have, cannot afford it and have to rely solely on wireless connectivity for their data services. Now, one of the critical issues, especially when you have a multifamily situation at the Fox Ridge, the neighborhood situations, is over 85% of E911 calls are placed by wireless devices. Whether it's a heart attack at the house, a disturbance, or a car wreck, that is critical that this area, including the schools, have the ability to have the wireless connectivity. Real quickly, the kudos to your city. You all are way, way ahead of it. You're asking your citizens, "Get connected with us. Let us know that you're connected, so we can give you emergency alerts." A lot of cities across the country do not and have not taken that step. Your schools in the area, the closest school, has a stay alert program, asking the parents to connect with us, so we can immediately tell you if there's a man-made or weather event that has occurred and how to deal with it. And this is Woodward Elementary School that's only less than three-quarters a mile away from the site. Um, now, like, final, if you give me just a second, you all have taken a lead, and tonight, this is being broadcast over your Facebook and your social media accounts. No longer are social media accounts used by municipalities solely to talk about the next social event. You all are the examples of it, and looking at the number of followers you have, 31- So we're respectfully requesting the opportunity to enact this proactive resolution of the impediments and the issues facing this tower. Your stop is the first stop. It will be further reviewed with your permission and your approval. Next stop is go to the planning commission, when there will be a more granular look at the tower site, and then on, if their approval of the SGP to site plan review, and then a thorough building permit analysis with tower specs and
...
... respectfully requesting your approval of this use variance. And we look forward to any questions you may have. Thank you for the time.
Thank you very much. Pete, did staff have any comments related to the request?
Yes, staff does have a few comments to make. You know, and this, this is not easy. This is a use variance that we're dealing with tonight, and it is really a question of, you know, whether this location is appropriate to continue having a 150-foot tall tower. You know, the tower that's there is slowly becoming obsolete, and with the granting of this use variance tonight and it moving forward to the planning commission next, it would be moving forward a, the allowance to build a new tower that would be there in perpetuity. We know how durable these monopoles are, and it will be there a long time. So, you know, the question is, is the site appropriate? You know, looking at the ordinance, just, just to go through this for the, for the board, under construction of new transmission towers or telecommunications towers, it says such construction requires a special use permit, and it goes on to list a number of zone districts that are, are commercial in nature, and then it says such construction also requires a special use permit in any RS, RD, or RM, RMHP, and then several other zone districts. So basically, it's, it's focusing in on a special use permit specifically for towers in residential zone districts, and it says, but only in the following locations. And then there are three criteria listed for these locations in these, in residential zone districts. One says religious assembly, but only when designated as a steeple bell tower or similar accessory structure compatible with the principal use on the property. Number two is parks-owned property, and number three is government public utility or public school sites. And that's what's identified. So it is a very limited number of situations in the residential zone districts where towers are allowed. And so I wanted to start by touching on that and then circling back to the review criteria. So we talk about the enforcement and provisions of the terms of the ordinance, depriving the applicant of practical purpose for use of the property, for permitted uses in the zone district. This is item number one. You know, the applicant is technically not limited in their use of the property for permitted uses in this RM15 zone district. There are a lot of permitted uses in the zone district. This is just not one of them. This is a, a legal non-conforming tower that, you know, as mentioned, was built in the And further, the site can be, you know, there, there's options that the applicant has, that the, the tower can be, you know, continue to be used as one carrier. In fact, it can even be structurally reinforced to, to prolong its lifespan. It can be, you know, the, the site could be decommissioned and the, and the tower removed and it redeveloped, and a tower constructed that meets the intent of the ordinance, you know, possibly a, a bell tower or et cetera, that would be allowed in that RM15 zone district. So, so that, you know, there, there are other alternatives. In fact, the tower could even be located nearby in a, in a manufacturing zone district, which permits towers by right. There is manufacturing zone property, you know, northeast of this site. So number two talks about the unnecessary hardship and the special circumstances. What was referenced is the, the, you know, current, it doesn't meet current engineering specifications and the lack of co-location as a, as a hardship. Staff does not view that as sufficient in this case to essentially allow for a brand-new tower to be constructed on this site that will be there for decades to come. You know, you know, if this, if this tower has, you know, completed its useful lifespan, then, you know, maybe it does need to be replaced with something that conforms to the zone district. Number three is the special circumstances are not the result of the actions of the applicant. I, I will say this, this is, you know, this is not something that the applicant has, has caused to be, become an issue. You know, this tower was there for quite a long time and has been owned by several different entities, so the applicant before us and, you know, the B Diamond Infra, you know, is, you know, did not create these circumstances. Number four talks about the granting of the variance as the minimum action. You know, the granting of the variance in this case is one of several steps that would be necessary to get this project to cross the finish line, so to speak. There's the use variance, there's the special use permit approval, and then there are several waivers that would need to be approved because of the location of the tower so close to the property lines. You know, technically, the, and one of those waivers is that the tower setback is supposed to be equal to the height of the tower, which, which it cannot meet that. But that again is, that's not for this board to talk through. That's for the planning commission and the city planner to resolve, but I'm just trying to point out that, you know, there are additional steps and actually the applicant, you know, Bev pointed that out as well. Moving on to number five, as far as not adversely affecting adjacent land, replacement of the tower wouldn't impact adjacent land any more than the present tower does. And then number six, the granting of the variance were generally consistent with the purpose and intent of the ordinance. It's, staff does not feel this is consistent with the intent of the ordinance, because these are not, um, this is, this was not written into the ordinance language for the RM15 zone district to, to have such a tower in a place like this where there are residential structures nearby. That is why in the M1, M2 district, it's permitted by right, because that is, you know, the, the more appropriate zone district where we don't allow new, new housing units. So that is all the comments staff has to share, and I'm open to any questions. Thank you.
Are you, so you not for it? Are you for it? I don't know.
Staff, staff is not for it because it does not align with all the review criteria. As I mentioned, I, I, you know, the, there was the one about, is it the result of actions of the applicant? The answer is no to that. The applicant did not create, you know, the situation. But, you know, the other elements of the review criteria, staff feels the applicant does not meet for granting of the use variance.
Is it because of, like, there's so much to understand. Okay, like, is it because of, like, the radio frequency situation in the residential neighborhood? Like, is that what the issue is? Or, like, I mean, there's a multitude of issues, it sounds like, but what, what is that?
Um, no, that was not something that's taken into account. I mean, I, I can only work with what's in the ordinance, so that's why I wanted to be very specific to speak to. This is a multifamily residential zone district, and these are the tower limitations that the ordinance tells out, so that's, that was really my focus. I don't, I don't know anything about radio frequency.
Well, that's what he mentioned in the presentation, but, okay. I want to, it's, do we get to both ask them questions and you?
Yes.
Okay, so is that, when we're talking about making our decisions, of course, you guys always are talking about the spirit of the ordinance, Pete, okay? So the reason why I'm asking about this is, is your answer no because of, like, some type, there's a safety issue or some type of hazard, or is it because it's not appropriately zoned? Like, what's the, what's this, what's your, I don't, I'm not clear on what you're always rooted in.
Yeah, so it's not appropriately zoned, and allowing this to move forward means that a brand-new tower gets put in the same spot.
A brand-new tower, but it will expand coverage.
Which, which will, you know, which will be there for a lot longer than the current lattice tower that's in place. And if, and if, you know, if there's logic and reasoning that spells out that that's, seems appropriate tonight to do, then that needs to be found. I'm, I'm just laying it out, you know, just like it is in the staff report and speaking to it from the ordinance standpoint. Does that, does that help?
I'm trying to continue to understand. Thank you.
Okay.
For the moment, I have a really easy question. Could I have you both say and spell your first and last name?
I don't think my question was hard.
Absolutely. Let me spell my, let me spell my first name. It's Bev. B is a boy.
No.
E, two more Bs. Bev Francis. F-R-A-N-C-I-S.
Like, quit taking shots at me before I take
Thank you.
For real. I don't like that.
And I'm Katie, K-A-T-I-E. Last name is Harms. H-A-R-M-S. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Remy. I did not mean to.
Don't, don't be cool. You ain't Gary. Don't be cool, bro.
I assume the zoning is more of an eyesore thing, which is why they would allow it to go into like bell towers, which are quote-unquote "pretty" and are not eyesores like a tower. Which is funny, because I'm like, just build 150-foot bell tower then and call it a church. I, I know that's not a practical thing, but sometimes I'm like, that's a workaround.
The problem, and it's a very logical question, but the reality is, you're talking about massive structure.
Yeah.
And it's much more visible, much more space required, and it stands out. We just visited the site with the tree growth. Driving up, we couldn't even see the tower. We had to watch for the right turn up Rockledge. Even going up into the drive to the apartments, going up almost to the gate, looking back, the tree growth is so significant and very nice that you can't really spot. The photo sims were taken, in fact, the photographer couldn't get those shots like we saw, so they had to go to another source, and probably those were from the fall. So you can really see for the majority of the time, it's basically masked by the existing foliage.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you very much. And, and I assume from the staff's viewpoint, it's like, I think what Pete's trying to say is, my personal feelings don't matter, and I have to abide by these, and we have criteria, and that's where it comes down.
Would you mind showing us the picture again of the, can I see the picture again of the new tower versus the old tower?
The existing tower?
Yes, sir. Please, thank you.
There you go. That would be went too far.
Well, that's the graph. Let me show you the actual. There it is.
Okay.
And then you had the
Yeah, but you showed it how it would, is and how it would be versus how it would be.
Photo sims, absolutely.
Thank you.
There it is.
Great, this is the existing self-support tower. This, I'm sorry, this is the existing self-support, and that's the monopole with the technology and so forth.
And it will, like, exponentially expand coverage?
I'm sorry.
It will exponentially expand coverage?
Absolutely.
With more carriers?
Yes, it gives the opportunity for AT&amp;T to upgrade because of the inability for them to add additional equipment, the modifications everybody is requiring, and it'll allow co-locations, which are not available because of the technology doesn't exist with the existing tower.
Yes, sir. Okay, and what, like, what's the, what's the science on, I don't know a better way to ask that question. Like, is this going to affect the people that, like, in any different type of way than it current, like, whatever the radio, whatever it is? I don't even know what could affect the people. Like, is it going to have some type of negative or detrimental implication on the people that it's around because of the expanded coverage or anything like that? Nothing. It will not have any of those issues.
If, no, it won't, because basically the sequence will be with your approval, and we go through the process, get the building permit. Once the building permit is issued, the, the new tower will be constructed 12 feet, which is less than the width of this room away from the existing tower. And once it's built, AT&amp;T equipment will be relocated and any modifications, and then the other tower will be decommissioned.
And the other tower will be decommissioned, so it's not going to have any problems?
Yes, it'll go down.
But we'll just expand our coverage? And it's 12 feet away from the other one?
Yes, ma'am. It's only 12 feet away. And a safety point that Katie brought, because the last 10, 15 years, they designed these towers, so instead of falling flat, technology that didn't exist 53 years ago. And the way they do it is they over-engineer the base and create a bend point, so in a uncalled-for situation, which is very, very rare, instead of falling flat, breaking, it bends at that bend point. And basically, this has been designed, sealed engineers later, for a 16-foot radius, so it'll stay within the property. We don't know what would happen on the existing tower.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So I, so am I, would I be correct to perceive this to be an infrastructure upgrade?
Yes, it is a significant upgrade.
Significant infrastructure upgrade with expanded coverage?
Yes.
With more carriers?
It is, and as Katie indicated
Got it.
If we go the other route
Yeah.
Where we wait for it to fail
Yeah.
And then we come to you
Then we don't have, yeah.
We spend 18 months getting here where we are today, where we have a proactive resolution.
Yes.
And that's why Katie was showing, if this tower goes away and we go through the process for the future 18 months, a significant portion of your community won't have the ability of AT&amp;T coverage. And AT&amp;T, like all carriers, are responsible for carrying anybody's E911 call. Say you have a Verizon carrier, you're in the area, you see a wreck, you call, AT&amp;T has to pick it up. Without AT&amp;T there, that's one carrier that can't handle an E911 call. So it's a significant benefit, especially for the people that are homebound, that need that coverage. And we're trying to be proactive for all the reasons
I love that.
That we've laid out.
I understand. And finally, for me, um, and y'all going to take down the other one too, in timely fashion?
Yes.
You going to take that down? Okay, all right. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you for the questions.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Go ahead.
And forgive me if this was covered and I missed it, but why can't it be put on another zone district where it's allowed already without, without an appeal?
The, to be, the FCC has stated that for it to be in one of these, any place, it has to be what I call the ABLES. It's got to be zonable, buildable, you've got to have a agreeable landlord, that, taking into account how they want to use their property, and utilities and fiber have to be available. So it's not just, why can't, that's a good question, why can't it be put over here? Well, it's got to meet all those requirements. And this situation, we already have a 150-foot tower there, as you see in the photo sims. We're going 12 feet over with a technologically increased of the tower fall zone and co-location ability. Did that address your question?
So there's not, the, the, there's not another place that's suitable that would allow for the right?
It would have to be investigated, but then, we're trying to get ahead of the issue, and this tower is already there, and it's got to also, when you move over, it's got to go, see, cell systems like you're seeing here are like a honeycomb. Each of those towers are designed to place honeycombs by the RF engineer. You move one, let's say you go up north, you move it, then it just then it disrupts the whole honeycomb. You're taking out a key cell, this green area in the center. So it's not just, can you move over here? Because all of them have to talk to each other as, Miss Hawn, you drive through the area. They're talking to each other and transferring your calls. That make sense?
Yes.
Can I ask you?
Thank you.
What was the fourth thing you said? Zonable, buildable, agreeable landlord, and then the fourth one?
I'm sorry?
The ABLE.
Oh, it's going to be zonable, developable, leasable, utilities available. And the main thing is, you've got to have a willing landlord.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Let's see. They've spoken. We've had staff comments.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So if this tower were to go away, or when it goes away, you mentioned that the area will no longer have coverage. What is that area specifically?
It's the area, let's go back. If you look at the tower right in the middle, the green, unfortunately, we don't have a laser pointer, but the one that's in the center, green is excellent coverage. That's as AT&amp;T is delivering service now. If it was to go away, the yellow, as you can see from the legend, shifts from very good to fair to marginal, which means no calls, you buffered or dropped calls. So it's a very significant event that we're trying to get ahead of. You have residents in that area. You have the school to the southeast. And that shows the area that you're looking at. Look at the yellow and the red.
So you said the school to the southeast, which is Woodward School?
Yes.
And that surrounding area?
Yes. It's down three-quarters of a mile southeast of our existing tower.
So would it go into the downtown area? Or just?
I'm sorry?
Would it go into the downtown area?
It could, yes, up to the north. It does cover those.
The north?
But it also covers down in towards the south, as you can see, down to actually kind of the south-central. And that's the area that would be impacted, Miss Hawn. So that's why we're trying to get ahead of this issue. So for 18 months, this is not the situation that we're facing.
So when you say 18 months, is that?
That's what it's taken Pete, I've been driving Pete crazy on this for 18 months.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
No. Staff comments?
Thank you for the questions.
Thank you, thank you. Anybody in the room wishing to step up and speak in favor? Don't everybody fight for it? No. Anybody wishing to speak against? No. And we know we're not going to have any calling questions. Thank you. So then I will close the public portion of the hearing. Please, somebody make a motion on the finding of fact.
I move that the finding of facts for 1516 Rock Ledge Court shall include all information included in the notice of public hearing date May 28, 2025, and the agenda packet staff provided for this request. Twelve notices of public hearing were sent and zero responses was received. A public hearing was held before the board. Public comments were accepted. There were none. And there were no voice comments because of, we weren't allowed to take them today. We weren't able to. So we had Mr. Bev Francis outside counsel for B Diamond Infra and Katie Harms from B Diamond Infra here to share their plans for the tower, their proposed tower. The existing structure doesn't meet current engineering specs. Technology since 1972 has drastically changed, and the structure is currently outdated. The applicants have not created the circumstances around this. The existing tower is in, it's currently legally non-conforming. Others, some alternatives that could be possible are other zone districts. But the applicant has said that their placement in another allowable district is not feasible based on their ABLE criteria and trying to get out ahead of this by 18 months, in their 18-month timeframe. This is a safer structure from, the fall pattern is safer. The new tower will allow multiple carriers, and AT&amp;T can no longer update the existing tower. No additional services would be required. And this is a, if it's not built, it can definitely negatively impact service to the areas surrounding the tower. And that's what I have, finding of fact.
I support the finding of fact.
Thank you. Why don't we just take a vote on the finding of fact? And then we can move on to the other motions, or other motions, excuse me. So all those in favor of adopting the finding of fact signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None? That carries. Does somebody wish to make a motion on the request itself?
I motion to approve the request.
A second, anybody?
I second.
Thank you. Now we can discuss. Somebody else start this one off.
I have a question for Pete. Do we know when this tower became non-conforming?
I don't.
Okay.
I don't have any background information that I was able to dig up on this because of the age of the tower.
Yeah.
I feel like, you know, it may have been a ham radio tower back in the day. And then at some point, you know, it turned into a telecommunications tower. But I don't have any background.
And do you know if the new zoning ordinances will affect this at all? The new zoning ordinances that may come about within the next year?
No. There's nothing in the works that will, yeah. Yeah. I mean, because this is a residential zone district, all these significant ordinance changes we've made related to like the commercial zone districts, you know, those wouldn't have any impact on it. And we are, you know, there's been no discussion about any changes to telecommunications facilities in the residential zone districts.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question also of Pete. This is, you said a legal non-conforming use, correct?
Correct.
And what they're proposing is not increasing the non-conformity of the use. It's really replacing it, transferring it to another, what would be a legal non-conforming use. It's not increasing the non-conformity, is it? Your knowledge?
That is correct. It's not increasing the degree of non-conformity. Yes. It's the existing lattice tower. Tower is 150 feet. The new tower will be 150 feet in height. I don't see how adding two carriers makes, in fact, actually, that makes it, towers are required to have colocators now, where this one doesn't have colocators. And that was pointed out by Bev Francis as well.
But in terms of the physical structure itself, it's not really changing the non-conformity?
Correct.
Good.
Correct.
I have another question. So the new tower would actually be safer than the old tower? Is that what you're saying? Because it will collapse if there's high winds or something like that?
Yes, Miss Hawn, as Kate presented, and we have in the package and also in the PowerPoint, we have a sealed engineer's letter explaining that in the unusual circumstance, in unexpected circumstance of a failure, because of the new technology of strengthening, or we call it overbuilding design, the wall thickness, it creates a bend point so that it doesn't snap at the bottom, which technology did not exist 53 years ago.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, ultimately, I feel like the discussion is, do we make him have to go find another piece of property or nearby where he could build? Because you said the Ms. are acceptable. He can just do it by right. Or do we save him the trouble?
And just continue the non-conformity?
And just continue the non-conformity.
Yes.
Yes.
With all due respect to the details and the intricacies of zoning that you pointed out and the reasons why this doesn't, is not a perfect fit or even a good fit in your view?
Yes. I mean, yes, from the vantage point of the ordinance, you know, this is not a good fit. I understand there's other, you know, there's other facts to take into consideration here.
But it is, after all, a non-conforming, a legal non-conforming use that is currently in place.
Yes.
And one of the ways we could view this is, this is a value-neutral thing that we're looking at.
It's kind of like the garage. Like, he's literally just going to put it right down on top of the other spot. He's not moving it this way, that way, nothing.
In a weird way, yes.
And they're upgrading it so it'll be a better structure anyway. I mean, that's the analogy from tonight's meeting.
The perfect request for variance.
Yeah. Thank you for throwing my words right back in my face, Gary.
You got it.
Well, I guess Gary knows that I'm going to vote in favor of it because I always talk about being consistent and trying to treat people in the same way on these. And I know it's not the same as the garage necessarily. There were other considerations. But it's literally also what Alan said. It's like a neutral thing. So for those reasons, while I recognize that the staff report has to be written in that way and recognizes some of those things, I do think this is a good example for a variance. So I'm going to vote in support of the request. Anybody else want to give their two cents?
I just agree.
Thank you.
I'm happy for that.
Then I take your two cents. I will put it in my pocket. Thank you, Pete. Do you want to take the vote then?
All right. And we'll start at the far end with Sylvester?
Yes.
Work?
Yes.
Holer?
Yes.
Harrington? Sorry.
I said yes.
Yes. Han?
Yes.
Thank you. That is approved, five-nothing. Congratulations. Enjoy your tower.
Thank you all. Appreciate it. Actually, we're just a little bit on the table. I really want to thank you for hanging there and working and always being responsive. So thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Now, if you really wanted to confuse you, ask him to explain the rule against perpetuities. That's an old property question. All right. Last on the agenda is, we need to talk about the proposed change to the bylaw.
Where did we get those? Where'd you get that from?
I don't, I'm not sure if they were on the agenda or not, but they were with the agenda packet.
And I can provide another copy right now?
We can discuss it. We don't, and if we wanted to, we can vote on it tonight.
Can we wait or no?
We can obviously wait. And that may be a good vote to make sure we have like the fullest complement of possible voters before we do vote on it, including Beth. Alan could be here too, and we get a full seven votes, six votes out of it.
And that is fine. The plan was for Charlie and I to talk through what these changes are. There's really four. There's four, you know, four changes that are being proposed. And so we're going to talk through them. If the board wants to hold this over to the next meeting.
White House take reconsideration, Alan.
Well, here's, and I think that will be a thing that we can talk about, for sure. I mean, the two big ones that I noticed, that I think we've actually had other discussions about is expanding the size of the board by a member so that we are no longer tied down to, well, you'd still need four votes to carry the vote, but it gives you a little more wiggle room for some of the applicants who might be feeling the heat about, or being concerned about certain requests, wanting to have a little more margin of error. And I appreciate that. Because essentially, right now, there are some nights where we may need to have a unanimous vote in order to approve something. And that would allow for a little more margin of error. Of course, you've got to find other members. And I know that we've got some potentials on tap. The other one, and then there's, Pete said four. The other big one to me is removing the reconsideration vote and the rehearing and all of that. And this is, and I can, I'll speak to that in this way. I like the motions for reconsideration and the rehearing. If people have a change of heart after the vote, it gives them a little more time to hopefully get it right. On the other hand, you vote how you vote, and you live with your vote, and then you're done. I appreciate both of those positions. And I think from this board's viewpoint, given that the applicants can engage in litigation if they wish, they have a fallback plan if they lose in front of us without us potentially having to reconsider or rehear. Assuming it's a losing applicant, a winning applicant's going to do nothing. I don't know who sues in that instance, but there you go. And yeah, I mean, given it's 9:30, we don't have to discuss a ton of it tonight.
I think it's corny to take that out.
We'll just go through it real quick. As Charlie and I talked about.
And I do like the idea of leaving it so we could have all of it here.
So, yeah.
Oh, and I forgot Tony. Tony's not here.
And Tony's not here, but yeah. Yeah. So just bear with us.
You want to wait? We could wait.
But Pete wanted to address it briefly.
Yeah. I mean, we can do this in five minutes. So first change is changing the name to bylaws because that's consistent with the other city boards and commissions.
Oh, I thought that was like a weird printing. I saw, and I'm like, I thought that's a weird printing.
Yeah. Yeah. So rules of procedure is really not, that's not a term used for the guiding regulations for the boards and commissions. So name change, number two, as was mentioned, increasing to seven. My research of 14 communities found no even numbers zoning board of appeals. I mean, Charlie could have saved me the effort, but I really wanted to look anyways.
Where did you see that one?
So, well, it was changing from six regular numbers to seven.
Seven, right. Okay. Go ahead.
And so.
We're trying to avoid a tie.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Which doesn't really seem fair, you know? Neither for or against has prevailed. So we're trying to avoid that.
Although a tie, I mean, is effectively a victory for the against.
Yep. Yes. True. So what I found was, there's zoning board of appeals of five, seven, nine. Those were the most common numbers. If you had five or seven, usually there was two alternates because of the number of regular seats. If you had nine, then there might be one alternate. So, you know, that was what the research showed. I mean, that's, it just, yeah. The even number has always been an unusual situation. So that's pushing it to seven board members. The third item was clarification of the vote, that four affirmative votes is required for anything to pass. That means that way, there's no question mark if there's a tie. If there's only four members or five members, say there's five members present and, you know, the majority votes in favor of it. I'm sorry. That'd be the wrong number. If there was four members present and three voted in favor of it and one voted against it, it would still fail because they need four affirmative votes. So we want to make sure it's crystal clear in these bylaws, you know, because of. if something gets challenged, this is one of the, you know, this is one of the pieces of information that has to go to circuit court. And then the last one, post-determination changes. The first, that we're leaving alone is the time limit when a variance needs to be exercised, and that's one year. And then the other two, I'm going to give to Charlie to briefly touch on, which was the reconsideration and the rehearing.
Now it's turning bear.
Yes.
Uh-uh.
And I'm going to start out with the elimination of that was not.
Okay.
It was in no way a reaction to the fact that we recently had a rehearing.
Okay.
The provision for reconsideration or rehearing, he tells me, has been in the bylaws for the ZBA for over 20 years. And I think we assumed that was, uh, okay. It's in Roberts Rules of Order that you can have reconsiderations, which the court has adopted. Our only concern was the 10-day requirement, and we were a little concerned about that because if a variance is approved, it's usually possible to get a building permit before the expiration of 10 days. So then somebody could think they have a variance and start their project, and then suddenly there's a reconsideration. So we wanted to avoid that conflict. Well, as attorneys sometimes do, and one of the things I, I really have enjoyed over the years in this profession, you're always learning something new, as attorneys sometimes do, I did some research. Okay, so we have some cases. One of the leading cases is Cuthman versus Osceola Township. There, a landowner got a variance from the township, and then the township had a change of heart, and had a rehearing, and denied the variance. But the landowner, of course, wasn't very happy about that, so he sued. What did the court conclude? Court said, "We note that neither the statute," and the statute was, is referring to the Zoning Enabling Act, nor the zoning ordinance of the township grants or authorizes a rehearing. We are not unmindful of the fact that zoning appeal boards are not courts, nor are they possessed of the powers of a court. Such boards are limited to the statute and the ordinance." And they put that in italics, they were emphasizing that. "It is our opinion that such boards do not have the inherent power to grant a rehearing." A later court said, "A zoning board which reconsiders its former grant or denial of a variance acts outside its statutory authority." Zoning Enabling Act doesn't allow you to have rehearings, our zoning ordinance doesn't allow you to have rehearings. Now Roberts Rules of Order says you can, and we've adopted Roberts Rules of Order, but those are just rules of procedure, and they don't change the authority that you have. So, you know, the Roberts Rules of Order, I mean, you've seen this book before, it's huge, it's for all different kinds of boards and committees and so forth, so not everything is going to apply to us or our things that we can use. So obviously, with this precedent out there, legal precedent, we decided we had to remove rehearing. We don't have the authority to do it. In some cases, maybe it would be a good thing, but if we can't do it, we can't do it. The problem would be, if we had a rehearing, and we'd granted a variance, and then the board reconsideres it and changes it, we are going to get sued.
And going to lose because we exceeded our authority.
And so, obviously, we don't want that, we don't want to put you through that. So it has nothing to do with, with what happened. And from what we had in place at the time, you know, we were following the, the bylaws, so we didn't have a problem with that.
Well, it was fun while it lasted.
Well, can we, but I think that that gives, okay, let me ask this question. Are you able to, why can't we put in a request to change the ordinance then? Why is that, why, like, we're either going to have to, we're going to have to change...
Well, I, I think the takeaway is, if, if the ordinance is essentially authorized by state law, and state law doesn't authorize that the ordinance can say whatever it wants, if it doesn't conform with state law, it doesn't matter.
So state law says that we can't, we've exceeded our purview with this?
Yeah, right.
Okay, the state law says that?
Yeah.
Okay, so you're going to have to just take it out regardless?
No, it's, this is just, you're, you're limited to a very narrow focus here with very narrow authorities, considering variances.
The state law, where, the state law says that you can't...
Yeah, it doesn't give any, it doesn't give you that authority.
Does it, okay, does it explicitly say that we don't have that authority?
It does not, but because it doesn't explicitly say you have it, you don't. You only have the authority it says you have.
Yeah, usually statutes are like that.
If it doesn't, okay, so if it didn't say we, it doesn't say we can't do it, but it doesn't say we can.
You said the courts... The courts have already held, though. See, the, the statute is one thing, the courts interpret the statute to say it means...
Right, and the courts have said...
...it's mattered to each other, and they say it doesn't mean that.
Specifically say you can, you don't have that authority.
I'm sorry, it's, it doesn't, it doesn't...
Because it doesn't say you can, you can't. That's what the courts say.
Okay. So we're going to talk about this when Tony and what's his name get here? And Beth?
Beth, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Let's stick it on.
Well, I'm happy.
Well, that gives you maybe some things to mull over about what's in the proposed bylaws or are there. Yep, and you, you can always email Charlie and I with questions. You don't have to save them up for, for an entire month.
Dear Charlie, how dare you? Quite doing research. No, no, I appreciate that, it's good to know. Uh, yeah, I guess we're adjourned then. I think that was all on our agenda.
All right.
Good night, everyone. Thanks, everybody.